This is the MISD August 19th, 2025 Special Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of the United States and Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I think you're proud, y'all. Ms. Alcantara, there needs public comments. The Board will go into closed meeting as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act for the reasons listed on our agenda. The time is now 5:31. We're now back in open session and the time now is 6:03. This special meeting is adjourned and the time now is 6:03. This is the MISD August 19th, 2025 Regular Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would please stand with me for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the Texas and the United States flag.
Got it. Let's pray. Father God, we come to you humbled and honored to serve in a community that supports our young people. Father God, that wraps their arms around them. Lord, we pray for guidance. We pray for safety. We pray for opportunities to invest in the lives of the children that you put in our care, God. We're so grateful for that opportunity. I'll be thankful for the 1,200 or so staff members that have hearts of gold, that love and protect and serve this community in the way of teachers and bus drivers and police officers and all the likes between God. We thank you and we praise you for all you've blessed us with, in Jesus' name and pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Ruffin, special recognitions and presentations.
We do. I've got Coach LaPlante. Coach, do you want to come up here and tell us about these young ladies that are staring at us over here?
Yes, sir. Still buzzing from last spring, so we're here to celebrate the Lake Creek Lions' 5A-D2 state championship run, 37-0, number four in the nation, of course, number one in state. And collectively since 2019, they've built a very impressive record of 20, excuse me, 228 and 22. So that has definitely been accounted for as Coach Carter will ask her to come up here and say a few things about her awesome team and the great run that they had and just an awesome, fun team to watch and great culture that she has built with her team. And we'll continue that with another fun year this year, but let's celebrate last year first.
Perfect. All right, first off, I just want to thank Dr. Ruffin, the school board members, and also Coach LaPlante, and everyone here on welcoming us and recognizing our state championship team. If you don't know, it happens at the end of June, school's out, no one's in session anymore. And so it kind of feels like you win and then it's like, where's the party? This is our party tonight because we haven't had it yet. So we're really excited to be here and feel very honored that you guys are taking the time to recognize all the hard work that these student athletes have put in. So at this time, I'm going to ask them to go ahead and come up, stand in front of you. You'll see before you. Make your way over this way, Brady.
That's Spivey's baby.
Want to do it then? Okay. Okay, you'll see in front of you from left to right, freshman number one, Brady Gossett, junior number two, Laney Galloway, junior number three, Abby Este, sophomore number four, Kaitlyn Clare, sophomore number five, Miranda Orso, sophomore, sorry, junior number five, Miranda Orso. I'm giving them your year that you won the state championship. I know y'all are seniors now. She's like, I'm a senior. What are you saying? Like, I don't want you to leave. You're still a junior. Okay? Sophomore number four, Kaitlyn Clare, junior number five, Miranda Orso, sophomore number six, Macy Nowak, junior number seven, Addie Davis, senior number eight, Chloe Futch, sophomore number nine, Bella Kirby, junior number 10, Gracie Brewer, junior number 11, Chloe McLean, one who is not here yet, our seniors have taken off to college, senior number 13, Maggie Hayward, junior number 14, Madeline Davis, sophomore number 16, Cameron Jackson, junior number 17, Sarah Wiggins, senior number 18, Chesney Davis, who's already at Texas State playing college softball, sophomore number 21, Morgan Nguyen, and sophomore number 23, Annelise Torres. We also have our three managers here, Delaney Janisch, Carly Romano, and Emma York, because as you know, it takes a village to make all these things happen. Coach LaPlante and I talked a little bit about kind of, you know, what do we want to talk about here? Because this is the first time these girls are getting recognized and it's a really exciting time. And we can talk about the accolades and you have all district, academic all district, all region, all state players, MVPs that you see here before you. Well, I think everybody knows that. I think everybody knows that talent that's standing in front of you as softball players, but what a lot of people don't realize are the kind of people that are standing in front of you, which is the part I'm the most proud about. The accolade that I do want to tell you is that every single person standing here before you made academic all district, made a 90 or above all season long. So through the tournaments, through the 37-0, through all the district play, every single person standing in front of you, make sure to put student in front of the athlete. Also, I wanted to tell you a little bit about them, not as athletes. Like I said, I want to talk more about who they are as students, as teammates, as daughters, as sisters. We talk so often amongst ourselves within our own program that softball's not forever. It's just not. There's no MLB for us. There's an AUSL now, but definitely doesn't pay like the MLB does. So these girls, I truly believe, are going to take over the world one day because of how they were raised, but also because the things that we instill amongst our program and the culture that we've created together. And like I said, it's taken a whole village. The wins and the championships are just a direct reflection of who they are, who raised them, what we instill amongst our program. We believe and respect integrity and leaving things better than we found them. We talk about it often, whether it's when we leave here in four years or when they leave here in four years, whether it's when we leave the weight room, when we leave another dugout, when we leave here tonight. We want to always leave them better than we found them. And I can honestly tell you, the girls standing in front of you today are doing exactly that. They are leaving this program, this community, this district better than they found it. So thank you so much. You guys want to get up there and take a picture? One group I did forget to recognize, which is always the most unappreciated group, who I should appreciate the most, is our assistant coach, Casey Spivey, and our other assistant coach, Dylan Larson, who's at football practice with Lake Creek right now. So I wanted to make sure I give them something too. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, hold on, Stephanie. There's something missing there a little bit. Hold on. Yeah, we're missing. What do we got? Yeah, we're missing something there.
The girls in the front row moved down a little bit. We're new, Miss Gash. You want to call the pass? Perfect. So we can see our friend, one, two, three, out there with you. Good deal.
I just want to say a few words real quick. This one's kind of special for me. I've known most of these girls since they were five or six years old, and this didn't start a year ago. This started a long time ago. And I can't thank Coach Carter and what she's done to get these girls to this level enough. Everything that she said just a minute ago, I can tell you that I've witnessed it with my own eyes. And you girls, remember, there's another generation below you that's watching every step that you take. So always keep that in the back of your mind and make sure that every action that you have, even though you may not appreciate what happened at the plate or play in the field, walk out of there with grace and understand that there is a little girl watching and is looking up to you. So I, this has been an incredible ride, having an older daughter that was here for two state championships and then another one on this team. This is special. So keep your heads up, keep representing not just Lake Creek, but Montgomery at a high standard. Thank you all.
Ladies, I'm going to tell you this also, real quick. You can stand up, it's okay. I just, I thoroughly enjoyed watching y'all play. Part of my job I love the most is going to events in sports, softball, baseball, probably the top two of those. No offense to anybody else. But I was the head softball coach, my very first job out of college, and I had just this belief that softball and baseball were pretty similar, right? Played baseball my whole life through college, I got this. I was wrong. I was very wrong. But I did learn a lot in watching y'all play and the level at which you played it gave me a true appreciation of the talent and skill and honestly, love for the game that you have. As someone that has been on different levels of teams and been different role players on teams, I love the fact that some of y'all embraced certain roles. Like, some of y'all were the hype people, right? Like Morgan Nguyen, if I see you run out of the dugout with bubble machine and a purple lay or gold lay or something, like, it's, that part of it is so critically important to understand. You know what? My role may be this, but I'm going to do that role as best I possibly can do it. Coach Spivey, huge shout out to you because there's a beautiful blessing that Miss Nguyen's holding, and you did all this while carrying that beautiful blessing when it was really hot outside. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to y'all. We're super proud. No pressure, but I think there was only two or three seniors on the field? Three? Yeah? Just saying. Congrats, ladies.
And to add to what Eddie said, I have two nieces who play softball, and I think they're second and fifth grade, and they can tell me y'all's roster numbers. So y'all have little girls watching y'all, looking up to y'all, so thank you for that. And to know that not only y'all are amazing athletes, but to know that y'all are amazing people too, makes me even more excited that she has y'all to look up to. I mean, she can tell me all about you guys, so thank you.
Anybody else? All right, any other special recognition?
That's it. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
I don't know enough about softball to chime in.
All right, item number four is to a hearing for citizens to present, present to address the board about the proposed 2025 tax rate. I'd like to read this before we start that. Good evening. I'd like to begin by noting that there are two separate opportunities for the public to comment on tonight's agenda. The first opportunity is for individuals wishing to address the board regarding the proposed 2025 tax rate. Following this, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a public comment as listed on the agenda. At this time, we will hear from those who have signed up to speak specifically about the proposed 2025 tax rate. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to share their comments. Ms. Alcantara, are there any individuals who have signed up to speak regarding the proposed 2025 tax rate? All right. Now we'll go into public comments, or are there any public comments? All right, moving right along to consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda? If none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda A through G as presented?
By motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Ivy. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Moving to action item number A, tax rate and debt service, for debt service, excuse me.
Good evening, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees. Action items 7A and 7B pertain to the district's 2025 Advilium tax rate. We are recommending the Board of Trustees approve the rate, the attached order resolution to adopt the 2025 tax rate of .3743 cents for debt service and .7169 cents for maintenance and operations per $100 of taxable valuation. These rates are required to fund the maintenance and operations and debt service budgets for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. The total tax rate of 1.0912 is the same rate that the district adopted last year. I recommend your approval on items 7A and 7B.
Any questions?
I have one, actually. You said that it's going to 1.0912
Correct.
Per $100 taxable valuation.
Yes, sir.
And that was the same as last year?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's not a tax increase?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the 2025 Advilium tax rate for debt service?
I move that the 2025 Advilium tax rate for debt service be adopted and set by order resolution at .3743 of every $100.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Any discussion?
Mind if I add something?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. So the way the tax rate mechanism works within the public school funding systems is as our property values increase, it compresses our M&amp;O rate. It compresses it down. As historically has happened each year, our property values continue to increase. And so ahead of the legislative session projecting property values to increase, we could have thought our M&amp;O rate might actually decrease because of that growth. That growth is offset by an increase to the homestead exemption. So the homestead exemption come November will go from 100,000 to 140,000. Well, that then decreases the taxable value of the district, which is why we did not see any compression on the M&amp;O rate. TEA will publish our maximum compressed rate. The very important thing to know when it comes to setting our tax rate is TEA funds us based on the tax rate that we're able to set. If we just go on a whim and say, let's set a tax rate 10 cents lower, we're going to be funded as if we should set it at the rate we're allowed to set it at. It's, there's a rate that's available that a lot of other taxing entities use. It's called the no new revenue rate. And that revenue rate, we're required to publish it, correct, Mr. Davidson? We're required to publish it.
We're not required to publish it.
We're not required to publish it. That rate does not work for school districts the way it works for other taxing entities because our state aid is also a component of that equation, right? The no new revenue rate, it's sometimes misunderstood that that is the rate in which will guarantee nobody pays an increase in taxes. That's not correct because if your property value goes up and the rate, or the no new revenue rate, and your property value goes up, you're paying more taxes because your property value goes up even though the rate stays the same. It's, it's very confusing, and I just want to make sure that there's some sort of opportunity to clarify that the no new revenue rate is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Other taxing entities can apply that and use it, and it means a lot more to them than it does to us in the sense that it's not our only variable in our equation. If we change the tax rate, then the other variable also changes in a negative way. So overall, as Mr. Davidson and Mr. Rob pointed out, the tax rate remains unchanged for this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. I guess it's time to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 7B, tax rate, maintenance, and operations.
The tax rate for maintenance and operations will be .7169 per $100 of assessed value.
Is there a motion to approve the 2025 Advilium tax rate for maintenance and operations?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption, 2025 Advilium tax rate for maintenance and operations be adopted and set by order resolution at .7169 cents per $100 taxable valuation. I further move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate, of a tax rate of 1.0912 cents per $100 valuation, which is effectively an 11.91% increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any discussion?
I do want to add one more thing to that. So the way that the trustees have to read this motion in this language is legally binding, right? It's what we have to read. But even the verbiage in there can be confusing because it says, move that the property tax rate be increased by the, we're not increasing the property tax rate. We're not. The 11.91% is comparative to the no new revenue rate, correct? So that's saying that the no new revenue rate is this, and we're adopting a rate that's 11.91% above the no new revenue rate.
That's correct.
Just talked about the no new revenue rate is this really fiction number to us that does not equate to financial stewardship or securities or anything. It does not, it's not one of our planning, financial planning variables that we're able to factor in at all. So even the verbiage that we're required to read is confusing in the sense that it says we're increasing it at 11.91%. We're not. It's based on the no new revenue rate.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. 7C, resolution declaring real property as surplus and sale of real property.
Yes, sir. So we own the old administrative building on Walden Road. The building itself is pretty well in disrepair. I think that's a pretty fair way to describe it. We do not see or have a use for that building. If the district were to entertain the idea of selling that property, the first step in being able to do that is the district has to declare this as a surplus property, one that we do not have use in, see use in, or need future need for. So this resolution is just kind of the step one that opens the door to say, okay, let's continue to ask questions and pursue the opportunity to potentially sell this property.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I messed you up because I spoke in between the discussion part last time.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of resolution, resolution declaring real property as surplus and approving sale of real property, property as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. 8A, information items. Looks like Mr. Davidson again.
Back up. I'm back. Item 8A, every year, the district is required to report on the purchasing cooperatives of which we're a member. We currently belong to 18 purchasing cooperatives. These cooperatives help ensure that we receive competitive pricing and that we're in compliance with Texas purchasing laws set forth by the Texas Education Code. Three of these 18 cooperatives charge a nominal fee and the others have no charge to the district. We pay $100 to TXMAS, 150 to CTPA, and on the buy board, when we purchase buses, it's $800 per transaction. So we purchased about $4 million worth of buses last year and two separate transactions, so we were charged $1,600 for that. Are there any questions on the purchasing cooperatives?
Anybody have any questions?
Actually, yeah. I'm sorry. Yes. What is the rebates, 23, 24 rebates?
So when you purchase from vendors through those cooperatives, they will issue a rebate back to the district, those vendors do.
So then we ought to be getting some big rebate checks after our bond projects.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Mr. Davidson. 8B, 2025-2026 employee handbooks.
Ms. Minor.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. I'm going to spend a little time going over the updates for the 25-26 MISD Employee Handbook. Tasby provides a model handbook each summer that we go through and update. They provided two this summer because they had to revise once we got more information from the 89th legislative session. So you'll find that the majority of these updates are from that particular session. If you happen to have went through your handbook, I'm sure you saw lots and lots of blue and reds, red items crossed out. A lot of that is moving items around and changes in verbiage. So today, I'm just going to go over the large, larger areas that have been addressed. So the first one is Christine's favorite, and what this states is that they have moved away from posting 72 hours in advance, and now our board workshops and board meetings need to be posted three business days in advance. The next item involves our ADA accommodations, and this topic simply outlines the procedures employees should follow to request an ADA accommodation, and then includes the name, position, and contact information for that person responsible for responding to those requests. And that person is Ms. Chavandalan Johnson, our benefits and employee relations coordinator. Next, this one is a biggie. This is outside employment and tutoring, and this affects our administrators in that administrators who have significant admin duties relating to the operation of a school district, either on a campus, in a program, or other subdivision, is restricted from outside employment. And they may not receive financial benefits for performing personal services for any business entity that conducts or solicits business with the district. And furthermore, they are also prohibited from receiving financial benefits for performing personal services for any education business that provides services regarding the curriculum or administration of any school district or other school district's open enrollment charter schools and ESCs. There is a caveat, there's an exception that applies to administrators if the board approves by statute, and the services must be performed on a personal, on their personal time. So let me give you an example because you're going to be having one of these come across September 2nd at the work session. We have an assistant principal who officiates on his own personal time for other district sports events, and so he will be bringing a narrative explaining what he does and so on and so forth, and you as a board will need to either approve or deny his ability to do this outside of work. So that gives you an example of what that looks like. Mental health training. All district employees who regularly interact with students are required to complete an evidence-based mental health training program designed to provide instruction regarding the recognition and support of children and youth who experience mental health or substance use issues that may pose a threat to school safety, and they must provide a certificate of completion with the name of the course and supporting docs confirming requirements of the commissioner. So currently, we take our mental health training through what's called Edge a Hero online. This is a little more of an advanced training that Region 6 has been able to start providing for us. We are looking at about 25% of our employees taking care of this training each year. They're allowed They're allowing us to do that each year in small increments, as long as we do at least 25% of our staff each year. Vacations and paid holidays. At the beginning of the summer, TASB came out and they did an audit of our policies and our employee handbook. So this is one of the items that they suggested we include in our employee handbook. So this includes detailed procedures regarding vacation days for our 260-day employees. So what that looks like is they receive 10 paid vacation days each year. Those accumulate without limit. Leave requests must be submitted to supervisors three days in advance. Upon separation, unused vacation days will be paid out, and they're prorated based on the days worked. So our 260-day employees are our maintenance folks, our mechanics, and our grounds folks. Another item they suggested us to include was definition of non-duty days. They are the total number of workdays in the district calendar less the employees' contracted number of workdays. Eligible 12-month employees shall be required to be on duty during the entire contract year from July 1st through June 30th. They shall be subject to approval by immediate supervisor, and no more than five non-duty days may be carried forward. FMLA, this was an addition through the 89th legislative session, and it allows teachers the option of not using paid leave during an FMLA absence for pregnancy, birth, or the adoption of a child. And reporting suspected child abuse. Senate Bill 571 covers a lot of deep dives into the definition of misconduct and abuse and the reporting that needs to take place. So under this particular section, all employees with reasonable cause to believe a child's physical or mental health or welfare has been adversely affected by abuse or neglect are required by state law to report to a law enforcement agency or Department of Family and Protective Services within 24 hours after the first, after the employee first has reasonable cause to believe that the child has been abused or neglected. That used to be 48 hours, now that has moved to 24 hours. Law enforcement does not include district police. And a person responsible for the care, custody, or welfare of that child, which would include a teacher, is required to report both to the DFPS and law enforcement. Sexual abuse...
Ms. Minor, can I stop you right there for a second?
Yep.
So, the, we've always had reporting requirements, right? We're mandatory reporters. That has not changed. What has changed, as Ms. Minor talked about, the timeline has shrunk, right? And they've broadened the definition of potential abuse neglect to include concerns about maintaining inappropriate boundaries between educator and student. There's a lot of latitude and vagueness that is built into some of these terms. So our principals, our assistant principals, leadership, teacher, we're going to really have to be in tune to these instances and circumstances that need to set off a little light bulb and alarm that says, hey, this falls within this bucket, so make sure that we comply with the mandatory reporting pieces of it. The challenge is, and we as leadership of this district have spent a lot of time the last few weeks trying to wrap our head around the procedural aspects of a lot of these new laws. Like, how do we implement these things when a lot of these things are actually contradicting each other? For example, along the same scope of abuse, neglect, potential concerns there in mental health and well-being, we're part of Senate Bill, was it 12? Part of Senate Bill 12 now requires us to have parental permission to have counseling services for a child. So we can't sit and counsel a child unless the parent has provided written consent. Well, if I'm a parent that is not going to win the parent of the year award, and my child may be in a situation where they need to talk to somebody, I'm not going to give consent, right? So we're really trying to navigate this in a way that, how do we comply with the law? And how do we make sure our kids are safe? September 1 is when all these new laws take in, to take in effect. We have a harmony with law provision, but it is going to take a lot of kind of administrative overhaul in how we approach these things, but we'll get there.
Hey, just out of curiosity, since we took a quick pause, why can't they report to our school district police?
Because as, as most things happen in public education, there's not a whole lot of trust in the public education system as a whole. And if the police department is a part of that umbrella, they also don't believe that trust and don't convey that trust there also. They want it coming from an outside agency so that the district can't be impartial and lean one way or the other based on a working relationship with maybe the staff or incident at hand.
Interesting.
Okay, as Dr. Ruffin shared, the definitions of abuse have been drilled down, and this includes conduct that constitutes the offense of continuous sexual abuse of a young child or disabled individual, indecency with a child, improper relationship between an educator and a student, sexual assault, or encouraging a child to engage in sexual conduct. And reporting to TEA. The conduct of an employee must be reported to TEA if there is evidence that the employee was involved in any of the following, and these are the two areas that Dr. Ruffin shared: engaged in inappropriate communication with a student or minor, failed to maintain appropriate boundaries with a student or minor.
And that's prior to completion of any sort of investigation, right? If we have evidence of it, it's mandatory required to report. I'm sorry, I got ahead of you, by the way.
That's totally fine.
Can you define what that boundary is? What is, I mean...
That's a conversation we've had.
Yeah.
Yep, it's going to be interesting to see how this plays out. So, under technology, additions to the use of the district's technology resources include artificial intelligence should only be used as a support tool to improve student outcomes, not to replace the decisions made by teachers or students. All use of AI tools, including large language models, must comply with FERPA and SIPA regulations, and personally identifiable information of student or staff must not be shared, entered, or processed through any AI system to ensure the protection of privacy and data security. This is another area that TASB suggested we add in, and I'm sure Ben is happy about this one. All cash or checks shall be turned in to the campus office daily and shall be deposited in the depository daily if possible. Resignations. The principal is required to notify the superintendent of an educator's resignation within seven business days of the following with a student or minor: certain misconduct, abuse, or an unlawful act; involvement or solicitation of a romantic relationship; solicitation or engaging in a sexual conduct; inappropriate communications; failure to maintain appropriate boundaries; as well as possession, transfer, sale, or distribution of a controlled substance; illegal transfer, appropriation, or expenditure of district or school property or funds; an attempt by fraudulent or unauthorized means to obtain or alter any certificate or permit for the purpose of promotion or additional compensation; committing a criminal offense or any part of a criminal offense on district property or at a school-sponsored event. The principal or director is required to notify the superintendent of a non-certified employee's resignation or termination within seven business days for any of the following with a student or minor: alleged incident of misconduct, of abuse, or otherwise committed an unlawful act; was involved in or solicited a romantic relationship; engaged in inappropriate communications; or failed to maintain appropriate boundaries. And this is a reporting piece that has been added. Once reported, the superintendent has 48 hours to report such conduct to ESPEC.
Are we not able to take some days off of that to make it quicker than giving them the seven days? I mean, they have seven days to report it. Can we not shorten that time if they suspect any of this?
Yeah, we wouldn't, I don't, we wouldn't have to wait the full seven days. If we had that information, we would report it sooner.
I was just trying to take some days off for them holding on to stuff.
So, go back again to that slide? So this is after an employee has been resigned or terminated. The reason that they've established this window is they don't want this person to pick up and say, well, I just left my job at Montgomery, and I'm going to run over to Magnolia and get hired as a bus driver over there, right? So that's the, the quicker it's reported, the quicker they can either flag a certificate or put a disclaimer on their credentials that say there's been an issue that's happened. We don't have the practice of waiting. Once we have a termination, we can go ahead and report it.
Right.
Or termination or resignation.
And then finally, discharge of a convicted employee. The district shall discharge any employee who has been convicted of a felony under Title V Penal Code or convicted of or placed on deferred adjudication, community supervision for the following: an offense requiring the registration as a sex offender; improper relationship between an educator and a student; sale, distribution, or display of harmful materials to a minor; public indecency; or a felony offense involving school property. Heavy topics. Any questions, comments?
Have fun.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Eight C, A through F accountability update for 2023, 2024, and 24, 25 school years.
We've got Dr. Summers. And, board, this is going to look very familiar to you, but I did just want to point out that at our August workshop, the board sat through a deep dive of the accountability and the update and the ratings that were to be released last week. But because our workshops are honestly, they're just smaller and not as well-attended, we wanted to make sure to also present this information at a regular scheduled board meeting. So it's obviously recorded and videotaped, and everyone can have these, the same information. So, go ahead, Dr. Summers.
Thank you very much. Yes, so I labeled this as part two, so again, this is, will be a condensed version of what I shared with you a couple of weeks ago, but we did have the scores released last week. So I did just want to confirm the A through F ratings. Kind of this slide looked a little bit different last time, but basically, if you need to know what the A, B, C, D, or F rating means, that is on the left there. In the middle is our ratings. These are what were released last week. So for the 24, 25, or what they refer to as the 25 A through F ratings, we were at 87, which is a B. They also released the 24 ratings the same time. Those were the ones that were held up with litigation. We were in 86 and a B as a district for that. And then the 23 were released last April, and we talked a little bit about that, and that was in 83 and a B. So over the, the previous three years that they've been rating districts and campuses, we've been on a nice upward trend on that, and we, we hope to continue that as we go forward. Just a couple of highlights there on the right, the district, we are, the 87 is the highest of any of the Montgomery County school districts, and so we're proud of that as well. Again, you know, A through F and accountability isn't the be-all, end-all, and the ultimate measure of what we do and how we're successful and how we prepare our students, but it is worth noting that we're doing a really, really good job, and we like to highlight that. And then we also outperformed the state averages at each of the achievement levels in nearly every content area measured on the spring 2025 star. We had just a couple that, that that wouldn't be the case for. I think it was seventh grade math, and there might have been one other one, but all in all, did a really good job. This is that one slide that can get a little bit wild and woolly, but basically, these little Pac-Man shapes help you understand a little bit better what, how they come up with that A through F letter grade. The very top row of Pac-Man shapes there is for elementary and junior high, and as I mentioned last time, they will take what you do the best at, if that's academic performance, which is basically approaches or better on the STAR test, passing the STAR test, if you will, or green Pac-Man, which is academic growth. So whatever they scored the year before on a test that is aligned the following year, so like fourth grade math to fifth grade math, seventh grade math to eighth grade math, reading, and so on. If you had a year's worth of growth and performed equally as a student, you got a point essentially for that. And then domain 2B is where they take domain 1 and align that based on your ECO DIS or your number of students below poverty line or receiving Title I qualifications, and so it reconfigures that score a little bit. So whichever of those three, your campus or your district does, well, actually, your campus, that goes into your score, and then each campus is proportionally impactful on the district. That started in 23, so your high schools, your junior highs are going to tend to have a little more weight in the district score because they have more students at their campuses. And then domain 3, the purple one there on the far right, that's the one where it gets a little bit mixed. It's a mix of how you do on 70% is how you do on those first three Pac-Man. Whichever one you do better on, that's 70% of the campus grade, and the other 30% of the campus grade is a combination of academic achievement, which, if you remember last time, that is Meats or Masters or Better, or Meats or Masters. And then how you do on growth, and then also how we do with our English language learners, and a couple of other factors. That second row, same thing applies basically for high school, except they take into consideration your CCMR and your graduation percentages, and so that's going to be reflected in our grades and what continue to help us with our, with our campuses. So this is a screenshot of what you would see if you go to Texas Schools or txschools.org or com, I can't remember what they are now, but, or is it, it's E State, or, but if you go to the, to their website, you can pull up any school, any district in the state, and so ours is a B, and you've, like I mentioned, and then you've got the, at the top right there, the scores from the last three years. And then I wanted to highlight this one because it's a pretty quick, easy snapshot. On the far left there is student achievement, so that'd be your domain, that's actually domain 1, that's that sliver of 30 where Meats or Masters, so we're doing well on that. You can see that line kind of ticking up just barely, but staying in the right direction. School progress, that is your domain 2B. That's the one that gets, is a mixture of growth and whatnot. And then the far right is closing the gaps. That's the pie chart on the far right that's got all the colors and the 70/30 breakdown. And so this is for the district, so every campus gets rated, and then those contribute to proportionally the district's rating, and so you can see a bit of a breakdown there on, on how our district came up with that B rating.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask a question on that?
Yes, yes.
So if you're looking at student achievement, we're doing well on that. Is it end up harder to make progress because you have a smaller window to make progress? I'm just wondering if that has to do with...
Yeah, it's not harder to make progress, but what happens on that school progress measure is, that's why they do either performance, growth, or progress, because for our, our district where we do not have a high number of Title I students...
Right.
Then we're not going to, that's probably not going to be our indicator that is not beneficial, but it's going to be the higher score that we would take. We're going to either use performance or growth. This were, this was the slide I showed as well. These were our projections at the time for what we thought the 2024 ratings were, and I'm happy to say, and it's comforting to know, that when we plug in the data into On Data Suite, which is a software tool that we use to track a lot of different data points in the district, the scores were exactly the same all the way through. So it's good to know as we go forward, anything that we put in there, as long as we put the data in well, and make sure that it's accurate, we can be pretty confident that we can trust those ratings and those scores. And so in 2024, we had, all campuses were a B, with Oak Hills Junior High being an A at 90, and the district was a B. And then for 2025, our A through F ratings, as we talked about, what we saw for the district was, again, domain 1 is really not a problem for us. Our students do well, we help them and prepare them well, and that's the, to be able to be approaches or, or better. Domain 2 is the area this past year where we... Domain 2 is the area this past year where we had a little bit of slippage. We had a few campuses where growth, the student who might have been at Meats didn't stay at Meats or didn't meet the, the level of Meats that they were the prior year, or maybe they were Masters and they fell to Meats, which is still a high standard, but if they got Masters the year before, we really need to keep them at Masters the next year and so on. So, that's gonna be an area of emphasis and focus. And Kristin Meeks, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, she talked about this last time and has already went and visited one campus today. We got another campus, two more campuses on Friday, and I'm gonna join her as many times as I can. And we're just talking with campus principals, getting a lay of the land and what their priorities are and helping them sort of make sense of that data. And so, we've already started that process this week. And, and then again, the domain 2B is the, that's the school progress one where they kind of, it's reflected based on economic, low, low economic students. And so, that one's always gonna be a category that's probably not going to be one of the three that we choose from in that top 70%. And then you could see domain 3, again, where you see the red on, for Montgomery Junior High, and then the purple is, again, the growth is a big piece of that. So, if you don't have a lot of your students maintaining Meats and Masters and then having that full year's worth of growth, then that's where it can be reflected 30% of their grade on domain 3. And so, for 2025, we had an overall district rating of 87, a B. We did have three campuses that were an A. And we had Lake Creek High School, Oak Hills Junior High, and Stewart Creek Elementary. And then Montgomery High School was an 88, so very, very close. And then we also had a couple of other campuses that were able to be really, really close as well on the B. So, pretty confident that with this focus and with the additional support staff that we have in the district, we'll see some more As next time around for that.
Dr. Summers, I wanna touch on something real quick. You talked about the campus visits and meeting with the campus principals. You know, I have a, I guess, just fundamental disagreement with how A through F works. Obviously, it's the, it's the easiest thing for our parents to translate, right? Like, we all went to school, we all know what it meant to get an A, we all know what it meant to get a C, a D, and so forth. That being said, it is nowhere close to an accurate indicator of the work of our teachers, of our students. And I think what I struggle the most with is we get to go in these buildings, right? We get to send our kids there. So, we recognize it's not just slapping a letter grade on a piece of paper, but you're putting that letter grade on every single teacher and student that walks in those doors. And I don't agree with that part of it. And even to the point where, as we have these conversations with our principals, by no means do we ever want to let this, this sense of prioritizing the STAR test, one test, one day, this accountability piece, to grow into this cloud that, that our teachers feel. It's hard to do, right? Because they see it too and they're just driven people that wants to do that, but we don't want our approach, our conversations, our data meetings, to be internalized by our teachers in a way that this is the only thing that matters, because it's not. And even, even more so, there's, there's factors in here that we don't have control of at all. One thing that, last week, was that last week, week before? I met with Chairman Buckley, Chairman of the House Education Committee, and we talked through HB 8, which is now in special session, to revive the STAR test or redo it and essentially make it a through-year assessment where you're taking a beginning, middle, and end-of-the-year test instead of one test, one day. For me, the stakes and the high stakes part of it relate to this, not how many times we take a test. So, it's, it's gotta consider how it impacts the accountability system. But one thing that we brought up to him that was really not on anybody else's radar, but Dr. Summers, actually, you pulled the data for me, so I appreciate that, but we're seeing a growing number of students just opt out of taking this assessment. I think we've gone, we've doubled every year. Yep, doubled the last three years, the number of students that are opting out. And that's a parental choice, right? They still have to come to school, we still have to provide them the assessment, but if they click on it or not, that's up to them. That decision by a parent is reflected in this data. And there's no kind of hold harmless that, that makes a consideration that, I can tell you right now, for Creek-Sad Elementary, one particular grade level, 40%, 42% of the students that did not pass that test, did not take that test. So, almost half of the kids that didn't pass opted out. And so, we're gonna continue to have conversations with our legislators to see if there can be some sort of consideration in there. Because again, when a third, when a third, fourth, fifth grade teacher looks at their data and says, man, I had 42% of my students didn't pass, or, you know, 20% of my students didn't pass. Well, in reality, half of those kids didn't even take the test. So, we're actually negatively impacted by a parental choice. And so, I just wanna highlight the, my, my belief, my approach to this, as, as we talk through A through F ratings, we're all about transparency. We'll put these things up and, and have any conversations anybody wants to have about them, but I don't think if you, if you poll our, our teachers, or if you poll our parents who send kids to one of these campuses that is in the purple as a C, I don't think their response would be, I feel like my kid is at a C campus. And if you poll one that's in the A, they very well might not say, I feel like my kid's in an A campus, just because it doesn't translate to, to the actual educational experience for our kids. So, we'll continue to, to work on growth improvement. We're all about growth mindset and how can we improve? Because this does in, in some way reflect student learning. So, obviously, it's a priority of ours in that, in that capacity, but it's not the end-all, be-all.
And I appreciate you sharing that. And I did wanna also mention that the, the growth you see at Montgomery High School to an 88 and then obviously Lake Creek at 90, that's also a reflection of our focus and our work on CCMR and career in college military readiness. You might remember a few years ago, they changed some of the rules on what constitutes a, an industry certification that they would allow, and then they also moved the goalposts on us. And what was to be an A was around a scale score of 60, moved it all the way up to 88 to be an A. And we could do nothing about that because the CCMR data runs on a two-year lag. But we knew we were doing the right thing, we knew we were getting kids solid industry certifications, we were making sure that they were meeting the CCMR marks according to the state standards. And because that is a big piece of the high school's rating, it's a part of domain 1, and then it comes back around on domain 3. So, for a high school, it can be almost about 60% or so of their rating, that's reflected in that. And so, that is a good indicator that the things that we are doing, that our high school principals and CT director at the time was Amy Vance and now Ms. Starkey, and our counselors are doing a great job of making sure kids are on the right track. And so, I think we'll continue to see that trend going in the right direction. And then just a reminder on the now what, our focus is on academic growth. We know that if we take care of that, make sure that our students have that full year's worth of growth from one STAR test to the next, that we'll be kind of on the right track for that. And again, as it is as an indicator of learning, we have others, we have our, our benchmarking that we do, we have other assessments that we look at, but we do know that, you know, A through F is looking at those things too, and so we wanna monitor that and help students do well on that. And so, we just look for really high-quality evidence of learning and how we measure their learning in a variety of ways, that we really support their collaborative professionalism, PLC times, those kinds of things, and then that we just really focus on high-quality instruction. And those things are gonna get us, sort of, get our kids where they need to be regardless of STAR testing. These are things that we do on a day-in and day-out basis, just to really make sure that our students have a, have a high-quality learning experience while they're with us. Any questions for that? Again, I know a lot of this was in the last workshop, I just wanted to come back around. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
I just wanna commend, before we adjourn, Dr. Ruffin and all of our staff for a relatively flawless opening day of school last week. Had the, the privilege of going with Dr. Ruffin to all the campuses and just seeing the, the smiles on the faces of our staff and parents and, and students. I told Dr. Ruffin when we left there, this is, this is the reason we do this. And it was, it was awesome just to, to, to see the fruits of the labor of everybody, all of our staff. It was, it was an incredible day, and I just wanted to make sure that we commend Dr. Ruffin and all of the staff because a lot of places, it's not that way.
We also have PTO, I'm looking at, from Stewart out there. We had PTO out there.
Yes.
First Staples School also, and so even the parents that put the effort and the time into that to make sure it's flawless, for the teachers also. It's a huge thank you to all of those parents also.
It is now 7:03, this meeting is adjourned.